Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Griffin City Board of Commissioners, May twenty-three, two thousand, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. We're going to open up with Commissioner Murray leading the pledge, followed by Commissioner Tinsley with the invitation. If you'll please join us.
Most gracious and heavenly Father, we're here today to ask your blessings and guidance and fullness for our communities as the late officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to reconcile the solid poems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just in the best ways ever one. Help us to overcome our shortcomings, keep us united, and gain the work for the better of the city and its people. We pray in your name.
Thank you. First item is to approve the agenda as presented. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? The motion by Commissioner Tinsley, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Four, zero. It's five, zero. Mr. Ward voting yes. Okay, moving into presentations and delegations, first item is to present a proclamation declaring May twenty-one through twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three to be National Public Works Week and Public Works Week in the City of Griffin. Followed a presentation of proclamation for Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So we have a group, I know from public works here, so we love in Public Works Week, the corner of the works folks. So do you feel well last, yesterday evening or afternoon?
Yeah.
Great time, great picture with your team and everybody together. Welcome, everybody. So we have a proclamation tonight, National Public Works Week, Public Works Week in the City of Griffin, connecting the world through public works. Whereas the infrastructure, facilities, and services that are collectively known as public works are of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and the well-being of the people of the City of Griffin, hereby contributing immediately to our citizens' quality of life. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees from the state and local units of the government and the private sector, who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, cemetery, golf course, public buildings, parks, fleet, management, signs, and other structures and facilities essential to services of our citizens. And whereas it is the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Griffin, our state, and our nation, to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in the importance of public works and public work programs in their respective communities. And whereas in the year two thousand and twenty-three, from May twenty-one to twenty-seven marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week in NPWW, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Through NPWW, in our efforts, the APWA seeks to raise the public awareness of public works issues and increase confidence in and appreciation for public work employees who are dedicated to improving our quality of life for not only present but future generations. Being now resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the City of Griffin do hereby declare that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of the city's Board of Commissioners meeting and that its official seal be affixed, designated the week of May twenty-one through twenty-seven, twenty-three, to be National Public Works Week and Public Works Week in the City of Griffin. And we urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, as well as the local, state government agencies and activities and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to our national health, safety, welfare, and quality of life. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Griffin to be affixed on this, the twenty-third day of May in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-three. Signed Douglas S. Holberg, Mayor, Jessica W. O'Connor, City Manager. So we'd like to present this proclamation and get a picture with our board and celebrate everything you do for it. So thank you so much. You don't want to come up here and gather around? For it? Right.
All right, so I just want to say thank you, you guys, for all you do, day in and day out. I truly appreciate all the hard work you put in to make sure the job is done right and efficient, efficiently and well. I also want to spotlight in particular the storm from January. You guys stepped into roles that you would not normally have done, and you did so willingly. So thank you for doing that. And I'm just honored to be a part of this team. So thank you.
Thank you, folks. All right, at this time, we're going to do the proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I believe we have members of our edit team here to join us. Welcome, and I hope y'all are all doing well today. So proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas in nineteen seventy-nine, Congress designated the week of May four as the annual celebration observance of Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Week. The week-long celebration was extended to the entire month in nineteen ninety by an act of Congress. And whereas during Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we celebrate and learn about the diverse and tremendous contributions made by Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. Among their contributions are those made in science, government, politics, and armed forces, medicine, literature, sports, and the arts. And whereas the history of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders is filled with the stories of resilience, persistence, and determination, and we value AAPI citizens as an integral part of the fabric of our community. And whereas the City of Griffin wishes to pay tribute to the generations of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders in our community, this month provides us with the opportunity to reflect on the vibrant culture and numerable contributions AAPI residents make in our community. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the City of Griffin do hereby proclaim May twenty-three as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Griffin and urge all citizens to explore AAPI history, culture, and accomplishments. In witness whereof, I have here unto set the hand and cause the seal of the City of Griffin to fix on this twenty-third day of May in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-three. Signed Douglas S. Holberg, Mayor, and Jessica W. O'Connor, City Manager. So, welcome, and if we can get another photo. And I know Alexa's a bunch of them.
So I actually don't have a lot of knowledge about this culture. And I want to, because it is an absolutely beautiful culture. There are some amazing artists and scientists and brilliant thinkers that come from this place, from these cultures, from these islands. And I love the idea that we can celebrate them, and I hope that we will do that even more so throughout, of course, this month, but for all time in the future. So I want to say thank you so much for celebrating them and for acknowledging them, and I hope that we can embrace even more so all of their art and culture in Griffin. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexa. Thank you to the edit team. Dr. Jones? Welcome.
Thank you. I wanted to thank the edit team for accepting this proclamation. Of course, one of the goals of our CDIC is to always make sure that we're being very inclusive of everyone in the community, which is why we advocated to have this proclamation presented. But just to give a little bit of knowledge, we have about one point five three percent of our citizens here in Griffin that identify as Asian American. And some history, Japanese Americans actually really revolutionized the fruit agriculture. And we had a lot of Chinese immigrants that helped to build the Transcontinental Railroad, which we get a lot of our goods and things delivered. So it's definitely a very important part of our history and of our culture, and we just wanted to make sure that our citizens are celebrated. So thank you.
Thank you, all. Moving to the citizen comments. At this time, the mayor opens up floor to comment to the audience, comment she would like to. Specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or to be concerned within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve a purpose for conducting city business are not a forum for the unleaded expression of opinion. The mayor reserve the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business, and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side who'd like to come forward? Sharon, please come forward. Happy day. Happy day. Please state your name.
Sharon Wright, eleven eighteen Pine Valley Road, Griffin, Georgia. Hey Holly, how you doing? Congratulations to Gordon, okay. And also I'd like to say congratulations to public works folks, because I tell you, they do a lot of hard work, and they do things for me that, you know, I mean, out of the dark, and you know, I really do appreciate them. And for those of you, welcome to Griffin, okay? All right, I hate to have to be a bearer of bad news, but really, I think there's some things that need to be looked at in Griffin, and one of them, it seems like the water is beginning to smell like chlorine really bad. And we got a lot of speeding going down Maple Drive. And especially between the hours of five and seven thirty in the evening. And we got kids, they may not be out at that time, we got lots of dogs, cats, and everything else like that, but I mean, they're flying. But last of all, I know Jessica, I've talked to you about this before, and I also do want to appreciate the fact you put the new dog waste things out. That's really nice. Really do appreciate that. Now going on the second week in our neighborhood, again, in Pine Valley, that yard waste hasn't been picked up. And Jessica, I know that Mrs. Brown called you, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, and just wanted to let you know that I did call Becky because when that same day that happened, the yard waste guy had stopped at around the corner there where the big hole is, I think it's eleven oh something. And he was up there picking up waste, and then I go into my driveway, and I have to go to Orchard Hill, so I go out the back way. I come back in the back way, and of course, I walk my dog anywhere from five thirty to seven thirty at night, okay? And as I pass her house, basically what it boils down to is her mailbox is laying on the ground, flattened out, and nobody else's yard waste had been picked up, those two spots. So I would almost bet my bottom dollar that the guy made a mistake and hit her mailbox by mistake, and I hope that the city paid for it, or they paid for it. Yeah, I, you know, I just wanted to let you know, that's what I noticed, and believe me, I do notice a lot of things in this town. And I know Jessica, you don't like to hear from me, but, you know, and I don't want to be a bearer of bad news, but you guys do a great job. Want to say thank you and good night.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there anybody else on my left side who'd like to come forward? Is there anybody on my right side who'd like to come forward? Moving into the consent agenda, we have items three through five. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Murray with motion, second by Mr. Brock. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, Euro. Moving into the regular agenda, consider the minutes of the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on May ninth. All were present except for Commissioner Tinsley. We have a motion to approve. Ms. Murray with motion, second by Ms. Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero, one, with Mr. Tinsley. Item seven is considered contract with the Anthony Brothers, single source, amount of thirty-one thousand, forty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents for a mulch head repair operated with skid steer within the street department. Ms. Murray with motion, second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, Euro. Item eight is considered contract with Wayne Cove, single source, amount of forty thousand dollars, six hundred thirty-one ninety-two cents repaired to the pole barn located at the street department. Ms. Ward with a motion, with a second. Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, Euro. Item nine is considered purchase of software maintenance for the Griffin Police Department Records Management Public Safety Software System in Central Square, sole source, amount of ninety-three thousand, eight hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Ms. Murray with motion, second. Second by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. You want a question, question first, before the, before the vote? Go ahead.
I see that the contract says it includes like regular updates. But there, maybe I didn't read it. Is there a duration for how long this contract is? I guess I'm wondering if there's like a significant upgrade. Does that include in the contract we have, or is this just for like regular updates?
That would be for regular software updates. If we were doing something like, they came out with a new version, typically there would be some sort of cost associated with that as well, just because we have to get.
A time limit on this contract. It's more like a product limitation.
Right, this is just maintenance.
Okay.
Okay, all right. We have a motion by Commissioner Murray, second by Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, Euro. Item ten, considered writing the ag power to place one hundred percent of the city's twenty-two meg power year-end settlement refund of eight hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars in the city's mega municipal competitive trust. Flexible operating now short-term portfolio and authorizing execution of the mega power projects twenty-two year-end settlement borne by the mayor and the city manager. Ms. Ward with a motion, second by Mr. Brock. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item eleven is considered adoption of the first amendment to the tower lease option with T-Mobile South LLC, amending to September one, two thousand and five, tower lease for the premises located at ten ninety-five Everian Road, Griffin, Georgia, in order to provide for additional renewal terms at a rate of three thousand dollars per month beginning in September twenty twenty-five, and for payment of a ten thousand dollar administrative reimbursement due upon upon execution of this, and then motion to approve. Ms. Murray with a motion, second, second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item twelve is considered memorandum of understanding among the U.S. Naval Criminal Investigations Investigative Service and the participating federal, state, county, and municipal agencies in the Southeast Law Enforcement Alliance Project lead information sharing initiative known as the Law Enforcement Information Exchange links for the operation of a regional warehouse of database. We have a motion to approve. Ms. Murray with a motion, we have a second. Second by Commissioner Tinsley, any question? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item thirteen is considered adoption of the fifth supplement, emergency resolution related to the January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three disaster event in terminating the emergency declaration of a state of emergency and all subsequent emergency resolutions related to aforementioned storm event. Ms. Murray with a motion, we have a second. Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Item fourteen is to consider amendment to the amended and restated interlocal cooperative agreement to establish and maintain the Griffin Spalding County Land Bank Authority to consider a lease agreement for personnel services for the City of Griffin and the Spalding County Land Bank Authority, and I believe we've got a recommendation of denial from the county officials. O'Connor would like to.
Yes, so let me address, I just realized when you read it that I unfortunately have a typo. The personnel services being recommended now are between Spalding County and the Land Bank Authority.
Okay.
So what has occurred, if you'll remember, is that two meetings ago for us, you approved the personnel lease agreement that we use for the airport authority. I drafted it similarly to make the executive director report to the city as the airport authority does. So the land bank and airport authority would work almost in the same manner, where they would also report through the land bank authority board. We sent over that personnel lease along with the amended interlocal cooperation agreement that would make that change within the agreement to the county at their meeting Monday before last, on the sixth, I think that was. They voted to deny that agreement and then sent back an agreement asking that the employee report to the county. At the land bank authority meeting back in May, I was very adamant that the executive director needs to report to a full-time person. The land bank board is a volunteer board of five. They have not had the time to be able to supervise a part-time executive director. And so I do not believe, and asked the four of them that were there at their main meeting if they could supervise a full-time executive director. They all agree that they cannot, and that it does need to report to either the city or the county. At the time, the suggestion was the city. Out of frustration, I will admit, on that meeting, I said, I don't care who it reports to, but it's got to report to somebody. Unfortunately, that was taken that I don't care if it reports to the county, and at the time, I don't know that I did care. In looking at it though, even at that particular meeting, there was not county representation at the meeting unless Ms. Wyndham was there representing the county. I'm not sure if she was representing the land bank authority in her capacity as the closing attorney for the land bank, or if she was there as the county attorney. But there was no other county employee present at that meeting, even after Mr. Galloway had specifically asked for our attendance at that meeting. That has been the case for the last three years. There has not been a county employee regularly present at a land bank meeting. Mr. Jacobs came to work for the city. He was the last one there that represented a county employee. And so I do not think that they have the knowledge or the staffing ability to be able to handle the land bank authority. I also think that the land bank is very differently situated within the city limits than it is in the county, just because of how city property operates. If you were in the city limits, you're going to have more of a responsibility to keep up your property, because you have neighbors. In the county, you may not. And so I think that there's just a different way that you have to operate certain properties, to the extent that we have expended over a hundred thousand dollars within the last year maintaining land bank properties within the city limits. The county doesn't even have a proposal for what they would use to maintain properties within the county. Additionally, the way that the interlocal agreement is currently written, the properties that the land bank currently owns, which is over three hundred now, would have to be split pro rata, so equal shares, because we equally share the expense of the land bank. It does not specify if equal shares is by property value, by number of parcels, by acreage, by what? So I think, and at a meeting back in February of last year, when we had a joint Zoom meeting, I made the suggestion that we change how that was worded in the interlocal cooperation agreement, that if it was ever to be dissolved, that the properties were split so that those that are within the county go back to the county, and those that were in the city go back to the city. That change was not made. So if, if, if we deny the personnel lease or the amendment to the interlocal cooperation agreement, which is not a party to the personnel lease, the way it is presented tonight, then the only other option is for the county to agree for the executive director to be part of the city employee, or to dissolve the thing. Either way, I think that this is, could be problematic going forward, because we can't seem to agree on who needs to be responsible for the land bank activities. I know that since they have not had an executive director and our staff has had to fill that role, specifically Mr. Jacobs and Ms. Gaines in development, a lot of help from his partner as well. They have done a tremendous job, and it is a ton of work. We cannot continue to do that as staff. I'm already asking them to do two full-time jobs with the storm, and they're ready for it. So we will have to say from here forward, including with even our IT staff at land bank meeting, we can't come down there and set up Zoom and run Zoom and have all of this administrative and support services that we've performed over the last year without there being an actual executive director in place that we are here to support. If it's going to be a county employee, then we can either bow out, they can start their own thing, whatever it is they want to do. I can't see us continuing in the fashion that you're creating.
And so your recommendation is for us to reject the offer? And then the ultimate is to, for us to have a staff member or just those of the land bank authority?
Either we employ the executive director of the land bank authority, because we're better suited to do it, or we dissolve one.
Any questions or comments? I'd like to make that motion that we send back a message to the county that we're going to continue operating in the end of the direction of the City of Griffin staff. Or.
Do we need to send a message, or do we just need to deny this?
We can deny the amendment, and it within, I mean, I don't need to notify them of that, with that notification, I can let them know that based on the discussion at tonight's meeting, that it is either a city employee or we dissolve.
I would prefer a motion, Dallas, pass, for Stephen to be finished.
Okay, so would you like to make that motion? Yes, please.
I move to deny the consideration of the amended interlocal cooperation agreement.
We have a motion, Commissioner Flowers, second by Ms. Murray. We have a discussion. All in favor, please, for the dial, please signal by raising your hand. Six, Euro. Item seventeen is considered resolution pledging practice and promote stability in Griffin, Georgia. Like we have the city of ethics, GMA has a city of stability, opportunity, and several hundred cities have already adopted this, and we might consider this. No motion by Commissioner Murray, second by Commissioner Tinsley. We have a discussion.
Comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all better actually do it.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it.
Your motion is second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. All right, six, zero. And each of you will need, there'll be an official document of each one of them signing off on sending it back to GM. Thank you very much. Item sixteen is consider authorization for Mayor Holberg, Commissioner Ward, Flowers, Murray, Tinsley, and Cord, attended Georgia Municipal Association Annual Convention in Savannah, Georgia, to June twenty-three through twenty-seven. Commissioner Murray with a motion, with a second. Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. And item seventeen is considered cancellation of City of Griffin Board of Commissioners' June twenty-seven, twenty-three workshop regular meetings due to commissioners' attendance at GMA Annual Convention in Savannah, Georgia, June twenty-three through twenty-seven, twenty-three. Commissioner Murray, second by Ms. Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, zero. Excellent job, folks. Moving to the city manager's report.
Very quickly, I wanted to thank the public works employees. I feel like a lot of times, electric and waterways already been get a lot of kudos for their work when we have something of disaster, or even just your everyday treat that falls when I send it to Marisa. And so I'm glad that we're finally recognizing there are a lot of other people that have to even get the electric crews in there to the, to the power lines, and that, that's a lot of those guys. Not to mention, we have a lot of divisions in our public works departments, including cemetery, the golf course, the parks, motor pool, facilities. They do a really good job, and I'm excited that they are there with us as our employees. Also, just wanted to let y'all know that Ms. Thompson and I wrapped up our budget today. We will continue that team on June sixth. Don't forget, we call that meeting for nine AM. We will have our public hearing and our workshop then, after our presentation. And then that night, or I'm sorry, following June thirteenth, our regular meeting, we will have our second public hearing and adoption. So it is a little difficult this year, but I think we have presented, we will be able to present something that's fair without a tax increase. So I look forward to showing all that in a couple of weeks. And then, of course, Memorial Day weekend is coming up with graduation, so everybody's. And then, of course, Memorial Day weekend is coming up with graduation. So everybody stay safe, be alert as the conference of last meeting. And also don't forget that city offices will be closed on May in honor of Memorial Day. That's it.
Thank you.
Nine.
Mr. Whalen. You're good? Mr. Brock. Commissioner Flowers.
No comment.
Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Tinsley. I will want to congratulate Public Works from those folks who have outstanding job. Anytime I'm called a marism or anything, so the street sign is damaged if it's fixed that day. So I appreciate the hard work you folks do very much. Thank you. Thank you. Just want to give a shout out to staff, the Chapel Street Art Year old dedication this past Thursday was excellent. So thank you all that were involved in that. I think it adds speed into move our interest going up North Hill Street and tying our community together. So excellent job on that. June tenth is our June damn second Saturday beach party. So just want to encourage everybody to get ready for that. All day has been lots happening, lots of sand, lots of fun. So thank you for everybody in there. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? And a motion by Commissioner Tinsley, second by Commissioner Murray, all in favor.